Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, meeting of the Air Planning Board. There is a paragraph I need to read to begin. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID number 833-6548-0732 or by calling 929-2056099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, DRuiz@air.ma.us or 978-772-8220, extension 144, prior to the meeting. First matter of business is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I have to go over... Yes, sir.
So did you want to do something? Oh, nevermind. You were going to change the order or something, or?
No, I don't think so. Nope, not today. No, I'm good today.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking, though. Hearing no discussion. Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. We have a public hearing to open. Is that the official statement to open it?
Yes.
Thank you. Jeff, if you would, be so kind.
You can just really write off there.
I'll just read the public notice.
Please.
The whole thing?
Yep, unfortunately.
I was told to go slow this time. Public hearing notice for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments pursuant to MGL, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 5. The Air Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 6:15 PM on Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, at the Town Hall, One Main Street, Air Mass., for the Planning Board to vote on recommending the following zoning bylaw amendments to the April 22nd, 2024 annual town meeting. First bullet, to see if the town will vote to approve the revised Town of Air zoning map showing the rezoning of 27 and 29 Harvard Road from general residence to general business or take any other action relative thereto. Second bullet, to see if the town will vote to approve the amendment to subsection 320-3.2A establishment. There is hereby established a Board of Appeals. Membership appointments and terms of regular and associate members shall be made in accordance with Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws. The Board of Appeals consisting of five members and two alternate members, who shall be residents of the Town of Air, shall be appointed as provided by MGL, Chapter 40A, Subsection 12, or take any other action relative thereto. Next bullet, to see if the town will vote to approve the addition of the following to subsection 320-10-3 Basic Requirements. A, for design guidelines of preferred affordable multifamily new construction, refer to the Massachusetts Multifamily New Construction Design requirements and guidelines developed by BHDC, DND, Mass. Housing and MHP. One, the Planning Board shall have the authority to allow new construction of multifamily housing under Section 10.3 of the air zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of new units to meet the target unit sizes referenced in Section 4.B Design Guidelines for Units Layouts and Interior Dimensions, or take any other action relative thereto. Final bullet, to see if the town will vote to approve the amendments to subsection 5.2 Table of Use Regulations, or take any other action relative thereto. The full text of the proposed article can be found on the Town of Air website And paper copies can be obtained at the Town Clerk's Office or at the Air Planning Department in Air Town Hall during normal business hours.
Thank you, Jeff. That's all. Danny, do you want to outline what's going to happen next? Kind of procedural order for us, please?
Yes. So just so that everyone knows, at the March 6th Select Board meeting, I gave a presentation on the four zoning amendments that we have put forth, and the Select Board voted unanimously to move it forward to the Planning Board. And so today, we're having the opening, the public hearing on the zoning amendments. And the process here is, depending on how the Board either votes, either today or at the next meeting on this, the Board is going to go through each of these four recommendations for the zoning amendments. We'll discuss them and the substance within each of those amendments. There will be... So I'll go through the same presentation I did for the Select Board, and then I'll have a presentation from Charlie, the Building Commissioner, Alicia from the Affordable Housing, and Alan from the Community Development.
Wonderful.
Economic and Community Development. And then after that, I think we will open it up to the Board for questions. And then, at that point, after we've had any questions answered through the Board, we'll open it up to the public for additional questions.
Are there any findings or decisions that we are to make today? Or is it mostly listening and learning?
So, there are no findings that are necessary. The way, depending on how the Board feels, you know, there may be some changes if the Board feels they may want to make some changes to these zoning amendments. But the way it would go is after the presentation, after everyone's got their answers done, if the Board feels they want to vote to recommend these to town meeting, they can do that.
That's it. The vote to recommend for warrant and town meeting. And would we do them individually, each one?
Yes.
Good.
Because each of them is its own separate warrant.
Perfect. Excellent. So let's leap in with the simplest one, the map.
And I will switch this right here. Okay. All right, so the proposed zoning amendments for April 22nd, 2024 town meeting. I won't go through these four because, actually, Jeff just read them off, so there's no need to kind of go through this one. So this is the first slide, the proposed zoning map. And the change here, I'll go to the next slide so you can actually see, is in the red up here, this is the two parcels of 27 and 29 Harvard Road. What happened on these is on the, in the October 25th, 2021 town meeting, there was a citizen's petition to rezone this parcel from general business to, or from general residence to general business. 27 Harvard Road was rezoned in the spring, the following year, at the April 25th, 2022 town meeting. The same was rezoned from general residence to general business as citizen's petition. The one issue with the rezoning was the zoning map, and I know the Planning Board did sign as an updated zoning map, but the updated zoning map was never brought to town meeting and adopted, which is the proper steps for it. Once it's adopted at town meeting, then the Planning Board signs it, and that gets put up on the website, you know. And so what we need to do here is, with the updated zoning map, it needs to be adopted by town meeting to legally put those into, from general residence to general business.
So as I understand it, what we're really doing is resolving a technicality from issues that have really already been resolved.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Finishing the job.
Finishing the job.
Excuse me.
Yes, exactly.
Exactly. Any other questions?
Let's just move it now and get it done.
Yeah, can we do that? Do the presentations from our guests have anything to weigh on this?
No, they don't, but I would not do it until... Because we still have to open it up to discussion from the public as well. The next one is the proposed amendment to the ZBA Establishment. So under Section 320, 3.2A Establishment of the ZBA, it states, "There is hereby established a Board of Appeals. Membership appointments and terms of regular and associate members shall be made in accordance with Chapter 40A of Mass. General Laws." So that's what it states currently. Town Council opined that we should specifically call out what the Board is made up of in our town because under Chapter 40H, it only specifically says three or five members. So it can be either. And so our Board is made up of five members with two alternate members. And so what we added to that section is the underlined section. I'll just read that, which is, "The Board of Appeals consisting of five members and two alternate members shall be residents of the Town of Air, shall be appointed as provided by MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 12." And this is just kind of a cleanup, just to make sure we have it properly stated in the bylaw.
Do they have two alternate members right now?
They have one right now.
They have one and a vacancy.
And a vacancy, yes.
So basically, this is a mirror of what already exists. We're not changing what it is. We're just formalizing it, making it legal.
The next one. So the proposed zoning amendment to the Inclusionary Housing. So on this section, the current bylaw... Oh, sorry. I went the wrong section. All right. So for this, we've already kind of discussed what the amendment was. Jeff read it off, but I'll read it again just so that everyone knows. So under Section 320, 10.3, the basic requirements under the Inclusionary Housing bylaw, we would be adding letter A.
I'm sorry?
It's 3.3.
10.3.
We'll get to that.
10.3.
Is the second bullet pointing on the handout? It's just formatted differently.
It's actually 3 dot 3, basic requirements. There's another 3.
Oh, okay. So that may be an amendment that we may need to just...
Yeah, we're going to have to fix that.
Yeah, I'll look at the actual wording that we have in the actual warrant article, and I'll get that amended. All right, so A, for design guidelines of preferred affordable multifamily new construction, refer to the Massachusetts Multifamily New Construction Design requirements and guidelines developed by BHDC, DND, Mass. Housing and MHP. And just to touch on this quickly, it does not reference, you know, EOHCLO because it was prior to them changing their name. So that's, there's a reason, that's why they're not on there. Under that, there'll be a subsection on number one that says, "Planning Board shall have the authority to allow new construction of multifamily housing under Section 10.3 of the air zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of new units to meet the target unit sizes referenced in Section 4B Design Guidelines of Units Layouts and Interior Dimensions." So under this section, so on the left-hand side, that's the cover of the actual design guidelines, which can actually be reached on the Planning Board website. And it's on the left-hand side, and you'll find it. It's called Massachusetts Multifamily New Construction. So if you ever want to read and look at what it is that is being proposed, it's on there. So under Section 6.3 H1, we currently have a minimum requirement of 750 square feet. It says, "Minimum floor area dwelling units. All dwelling units except for single-family houses shall provide a minimum habitable floor area as follows. One, for a dwelling unit on one floor, 750 square feet." So this is an issue when it comes to projects that are triggering the Inclusionary Housing because if, based on how the Massachusetts, you know, the design guidelines that we're referring to, they have unit sizes in there of studios being around 500 square feet, one bedrooms being 600 square feet, and both of those fall under the 750 square foot minimum.
And Danny, could you remind everyone what triggers the Inclusionary?
Yes. So to trigger the Inclusionary Housing, it's a development of five, it's five units or more of a multifamily. So when you trigger that, this is where the guidelines would be assisting the Planning Board because it would allow for the Planning Board to give the authority to the applicant to be able to build under that 750 so that they can meet the affordable sizes that are put forth in this guideline. It makes the units more affordable via the rent. It's not as big, and that's really what the state is looking for. They're trying to make it so that rent isn't so crazy right now. And so typically, 750, when you look at studios and one bedrooms, that's kind of, it's a little bit too much for, too big for the unit size for that. It's not, it doesn't help in the Affordable Housing Inclusionary bylaw. And so what we want to do is just add that section in to allow the Board to avoid that, or to allow applicants to be able to build under that because we've run into this issue before on a previous project. And we, so with this design guidelines, there's also other sections within the guidelines which kind of give the applicant the information that they would want to build for a full project of affordable housing for inclusionary. It kind of gives everyone set guidelines as to what the Board would be expecting. That way, it's when the applicant comes in, there's not really any guessing. It's, you already know what the Board is going to expect. So a big thing to make sure to note on this is, this is only for if the Inclusionary Housing bylaw is triggered. The 750 would still remain in Section 6.3 H1 for any project that's under, that does not trigger the Inclusionary Housing. So if you're building three units, two units, you have to meet the 750.
And I think it's worth noting, too, that if the state updates the design requirements and guidelines, we'd automatically be in compliance because we're mapping our regulations to their design guidelines.
Yeah, and the way we have it is, they're not, they're going to be guidelines for us. They're not required to do it. It's preferred is what the wording that we put forth. So that, you know, there are going to be some deviations that people are going to want to do differently than the guidelines, and that kind of opens it up for the Board to be able, have the ability to go have some back and forth on those. And the biggest portion on this one is, the reason is trying to create more affordable units. We've had some trouble actually having developers or applicants build in the Inclusionary Housing bylaw. We've had it quite for, I think, about eight years, maybe more?
Since '18.
Oh, since '18. And we haven't had any projects actually built under it. So we're trying to incentivize some people to actually build in the Inclusionary Housing. The next one is the Table of Use Regulations. So as you see up here, the sections in red are the proposed amendments that we have. The two-family dwellings would go from, in the A1 and A2, would go from special permit to permitted by right. The townhouse or multifamily dwellings would go from not permitted to, from a no to, in the A1 and A2, to a special permit by the Planning Board. And then from a no under the general business...
SBZ.
Oh, SBZ?
SBZ.
On the...
Currently SBZ.
Okay. SBZ on the general business to special permit by the Planning Board. The next change was on 1.6. We changed it from apartments to dwelling units because we don't have an actual definition for apartments. We have dwelling units within our bylaw for definitions. The next one was on 1.7. We added S's to the dwelling units to make it plural. And then on the, we struck the ground floor of the building and changed it to the elevation of the building at street level, just to be more clear as to what exactly we're talking about. And then, just a cleanup on this one, on the Downtown Air Park Street. So this, under the West Air, it was permitted, and for some reason, this was a no?
No, SPB.
Just look at that.
Really old version.
You're right, it is an SPB. Yep. So from special permit, from the Planning Board, to permitted by right. And that's kind of just a cleanup because the West Air has it as allowed by right. We wanted to have the Downtown Air also by right. And they're both the same kind of form-based code. All right. And so the reasons we're looking at these changes from the working group was to encourage more affordable housing in the Town of Air. We wanted to increase how much diverse housing stock we had within the Town of Air, not only in the housing stock types of like single-family, duplex, multifamily, but as well as the pricing. And this adding, allowing the two families and the multifamilies would just increase the ability to have more inventory within the Town of Air and also will help try to combat the pricing. As for two families, it would help bring that down a little bit so that a two-family house is typically not sold as much as, doesn't go for as much as a single-family does.
If you don't mind, just want to be clear. This would be housing that is at a lower price and more affordable housing.
Correct.
Not affordable housing as in, you have to make the state guidelines for affordability.
Correct.
That needs to be really clear. We talk about, we talk about affordable, small and big A, those we've talked about a lot. We also talk about housing diversity.
Right.
So what we're actually talking about is the economic cost of the house more diverse, things that are lower cost than a single-family home on a one-acre lot. Just want to be clear on that.
Yep.
Because those words scare people these days.
Yes.
And unfortunately, we're locked into that lexicon.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you. I appreciate that. Great point.
And so for the two-family dwellings, as of right now, they're currently allowed by right within the general residence, the downtown and west air form-based code, the mixed-use transitional, and the general business. You know, allowing it by right in the A1 and A2 zone, which are residential zones, only makes sense, and it's just going to push us that much closer to having more inventory within the town and, you know, combat these prices. The townhouse and multifamily dwellings, allowing that within the A1, A2, and the general business zones by special permit, it's going to make some of these bigger parcels a little bit more viable so that it's not only subdivisions that we're getting in single-family lots. It's going to increase the ability to have developers come in and be able to trigger the Inclusionary Housing bylaw and have a little bit more diverse types of developments. There would, you know, there could be single, duplex, triplex, just a mix of different types of units within this development, and it would still trigger the Inclusionary Housing so there would be an affordable component to it. The proposed, and then the last two are just the changes on the dwelling units and 1.7. Think... yeah.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Questions?
Yes.
Going back to the third item.
The third.
You talked about it briefly, but the key word, preferred. Can you say a bit more about what that is doing?
Yes.
Is it a special designation? Is it a full, like...
So preferred, the reason we use the word preferred was so that it wasn't a requirement. It's more of, this is kind of what, this guideline is what the Planning Board is going to expect and, because it kind of sets forth what the Planning Board would like for new construction for multifamily. It's preferred. It doesn't necessarily mean it's required, so it gives the Planning Board and the applicant some leeway to go back and forth on certain aspects of the project as well that fall within this. So it's not to lock them specifically into this because, you know, some developers are going to want to do some certain things differently.
That makes sense. And then the other thing, for the Inclusionary Housing, I thought you said five is the... But then your slide has four. Is there, what is the number?
So it's five or more? I think my slide just said four or less. It does not trigger.
More than four.
Yeah, more than four would trigger.
So four triggers or five triggers?
More than four. So it's five or more.
Five and up.
And we don't allow partials anymore? Only do, I'm sorry.
Four parts five. And last question, just to be clear, in terms of the multifamily construction, that also doesn't have to be net new multifamily construction. That could be taking an existing single-family home and choosing to make it a multifamily, providing everything it's net.
It's still, so that's where, it would still be considered new construction because you're, it's, I understand what you're kind of asking, like if you're redeveloping an existing building into it, but it still would be considered new construction because they would still have to meet all of today's regulations.
That's perfectly within the clear.
Yep.
Got it.
For the chair, Danny, on this section, if we want to stay on this section, I guess we'll jump around. We'll start here in the middle. The intent, is the intent that if you have a unit, and we'll use the example of five-unit development, five dwelling units, that will trigger the Inclusionary Housing, the developer is required to go to seven?
To what?
Is required to go to seven units?
No, that's a bonus if he wants.
As a bonus.
Okay. Developer chooses to go to seven to get the extra units in the Inclusionary Housing. Two will be Inclusionary. Five will remain to the Section 6.3.
One is, one is...
I get, wait, 6.3, what do we? The seven?
They'll all come into Inclusionary. That's the point.
Yeah, so the whole development, yeah.
Yes, the whole thing.
All, all seven could be under 750 feet if single-bedroom units.
All seven would fall into this requirement. That's the whole point of the thing.
That's the whole point of this.
Because the entire development becomes Inclusionary?
Yeah.
Correct.
Even though five are market rate.
Correct.
Yeah, and I mean, that's how our...
Six, it could be six.
That's how our Inclusionary Housing bylaw works today.
Right.
Okay. So then when the, in 10.3, it might be just, it might be fortuitous that you have just 10.3 and not 10.33 called out because in 10.32, which is at the end of our edit, the red line edit,
Yep.
the last sentence in 10.32C, which is the paragraph above, is the famous one that says, "Planning Board shall have authority to modify dimensional density requirements that apply to the development in order to accommodate the additional units." So now, just to be clear, the development means the entirety of the development.
Correct.
That's the intent? That's the understanding?
Yes. That's why we had added that subsection of, within that, let me just get to it. That's why we added this subsection so that we wouldn't run into the same issue of, that we did on a previous project, trying to find a way to allow it as a waiver in essence, but... And if, had we waived it and allowed it, we would have been setting a precedent in a way that would be almost basically rewriting the bylaw, which is why we want to add this within the bylaw now in a proper way to do it so that we don't have to go through that process.
Okay. So if the developer, the applicant chooses not to do the, get the Inclusionary bonus, now they're back under, they waive all the 10.3 sections, right?
So if they're, so if they don't trigger the Inclusionary Housing?
They trigger, but they elect not to take the bonuses.
So they're going to have five units.
So they're going to have five units.
The one affordable. The fifth one will be affordable.
Yeah.
Okay. But it's going to be...
But it'll still go under the new requirement that you can make them smaller than 750.
Interesting. If I may, but...
That's the point.
Okay. So, if I may, and maybe this will be helpful, I'm not sure.
They don't have to be ten smaller than 750.
Correct.
You could build five units that are 2,000 square feet a unit.
Sure.
Because that's what he thinks the market, that's what the proponent will think the market will bear.
Right.
They get another unit. And so these, all we're doing is dropping kind of the denominator on square footage, if you will.
Yes.
And that makes sense if you take a look at the land that's available now.
Yeah.
And what's currently in the market. Who knows what's going to happen in this marketplace in 10 or 15 years?
Yeah, this is kind of, this is kind of like...
Was that helpful?
I'm sorry. It's kind of towards projects that have more than just like five, six units. This is kind of targeted towards bigger developments, but there may be the occasion where you're going to have, you know... where you're going to have, you know, 10 units. If, if it does come down to that where, where there are like five or six, seven units, the applicant is totally, if they want to do it bigger than that, they can. They don't have to. That's why, and that's why we said preferred.
If, what I'd like to do at this point is certainly not to silence you, not at all, but I felt it was important to address the questions that are specific to his presentation to get clarity. But for the deeper weeds, Nathan, if it's acceptable to you, what I'd like to do is put a pause because we have three presentations that might actually answer your questions in advance. So let's, what I would advise them is that let's have the presentations. We're going to have a large discussion after all three, but after each one, if there's specific questions you want for clarification from the speaker.
Yeah.
Certainly ask.
Okay.
But I'm going to ask, let's postpone the large questions till we got all the information in front of us. Fair enough? Okay. Charlie, do you have an electronic thing that you need for up here? Any presentations up there?
If you want to put up the plan, that's fine. And I'll take it in order when I get to it, if you don't mind.
I just wanted to interject one thing that's not, just to clarify that most of these changes have been driven by a working group.
Correct.
And I'm not sure that everyone understood that sequence or not, that the working group is basically bringing this through, Danny who cooperated with the working group, to the board.
And different members of the board are, the level of communication with the working group.
Right. So anyway.
So Mr. Chair, I was actually invited on the working group in, for affordable housing, you all know that. So I'm going to speak, I agree with all the changes that the working group wants to make and bring through the town meeting, but I want to speak specifically more towards section 5.2, number 1.2 for the A2, and it also relates to the A1, which I'll get to at the end. But, so basically, why should we update 5.2? First, a two-family in A2 would have minimal, if any, impact on the six factors that the ZBA considers during the process of an approval for a two-family in A2. I took them one by one, it's going to take a little bit. So social and economic, there's absolutely no impact compared to an A1 family. Community needs, it's a positive impact for the master plan, they want more units.
Correct.
Traffic flow and safety, there's no impact compared to a one-family, and I'll tell you the reason why when I finish through it. Adequacy of utilities and public service, there's no impact compared to a one-family. Neighborhood character, there is no impact, again, as you can just take the interior foyer of a house and change it to two doors and a firewall and you can't tell if it's a one-family or a two-family. Impact on the natural environment, no more, it's no more than a one-family is both have to, as we talked about, meet the same zoning criteria in 6.2 or 3 for setbacks and lot coverage and so forth. And then fiscal impact, there's no more than a one-family. And this is because, as you can see in this diagram here, which I also have under number three, in a two-family, you need to have at least two kitchens, two bathrooms and two stairwells. So that eats up, I took an average-sized house, it eats up about 238 square feet.
Sure.
And by the building code and sanitary code, a one-for-bedroom, you have to be seven by 10 for one occupant and another 50 square feet per occupant, per bedroom. So you could have, not saying you would, but you can have four more occupants in a one-family compared to a two-family. So for, that's why I went through one through six, the social, it has no negative impact on anything, but it does have a positive impact that we have more affordable, not affordable, affordable, but affordable housing.
Lowercase.
Lowercase. So, and that's what I'm going to deal with, lowercase in my presentation. So two, but I said earlier, you can design any single-family into a two-family home without changing the exterior appearance of the house. Change the inside foyer, you put the two egress doors in the back, you can't tell if it's a one or two-family. Again, occupant load, I just explained you can have more in a single-family, not that you would or may not, but you can. And of course, a two-family is more affordable option than a single-family because it's roughly, and this comes from building permits and being upstairs, it's, the cost is roughly about 250 a square foot for a two-family compared to 350 for a single-family. So you're talking roughly 500K compared to 750K. Now we're actually up to about 800,000. So, you know, this could help families with parents that are getting older and the kids buying a duplex and being able to take care of their parents or have the parents, you know, babysit for the kids because both parents usually work now. So I believe it's a huge favorable impact to have these two families because the prices are astronomical now. So then for A2, the, A2 families already, as Danny pointed out, allowed in GR, downtown Form Base Code, West Village Form Base Code, the mud zone in the general business. And if you take the general business, it's permitted by right in a business zone and not in a residential zone, which makes no sense. And I've asked around why it needs a special permit and no one really knows the answer. And after doing all this research, I can find no reason why unless there was too many years ago when the Army was here.
Yeah.
And I'm just speculating. And the townspeople said, "Well, we have enough two-families, let's make it a special permit." But it is permitted by right with a special permit, but it's still permitted. And then the two-family still needs to meet all the other zoning criteria in our bylaws.
Very important.
None of that changes. And then if you take the general residence zone and you go by the dimensional use requirement, it's 10,000 plus 3,000 for another unit. So you're talking about only, you'd only need a 13,000-square-foot lot to build a two-family by right in general residence, whereas in A2, you have to have 24,000 and 100-foot frontage to build it with a special permit, which doesn't make any sense. And then, and I'll touch on A1, they're 40,000 square feet. So as we talked about in the, in the group, it's like, why not add, if people want to add there, they already have more land than it's required by any other part of our zoning by law. So, you know, if they want to help the kids, the kids want to help the parents, same thing So let me just, one more. That, that's about it. That's the reason I'm totally for just making it permitted by right because it just, with all the facts that I pulled up, it doesn't make any sense to have it done with a special permit. Not only that, if a developer wants to put in a special permit or a two-family has to go for a special permit and he's denied, and I'm not sticking up for developers, but if he has a house sold or under agreement with the family and he's denied, there goes that opportunity for someone to stay in there that maybe can't afford $800,000. So that's where, you know, it gets back into the affordable part.
Absolutely.
And it's an asset for the town to keep these younger people in town that work in the area and the kids to keep the town growing. So I am in favor of changing that to permitted by right in A1 and A2.
Charlie, thank you so much. Do any of my board members have any questions to Charlie for clarifications on what he just
Charlie, do you want to comment on the next line down?
Special permit.
Townhouse and multifamily? We can do it later, I mean.
Yeah, that's more of a planning board, so I didn't want to overstep my bounds and you were on the committee also, so I thought you might handle it.
Thank you.
If that's okay, boss?
It was okay until he said that.
Anyone in the, anyone sitting out there have any questions for Charlie? Any clarification? Just, just my chair. No? Okay. You're good. Thank you, Charlie.
That was great, Charlie. Thank you.
Alicia.
Alicia!
I think you guys have all seen this before. We're going to do it again.
Let's do it.
And I'm just bringing up the demographics again and what's happening in our town. And oh my goodness, I might have to stand up to read this because I didn't bring a copy with me.
I'll make it big for you.
Oh, thank you. So this is, our office has done a deep dive on what's happening in our town through the 2020 census. And we're seeing a lot of growth. If you see compared to the towns around us, we're at 14.6% growth in the last 10 years. And that, some people find that's a problem, but what I think we're doing right here is talking about planning board directing that growth and getting what we want out of it instead of having it be driven by just the market. Okay? So next slide. Here, I'm just showing you what qualifies as low income, and these are just general numbers to get you to understand how we come up with all these different numbers. The federal poverty rate is at 14,580, but Massachusetts extremely low income rate, which is our poverty rate, is at 26,400 because it's so expensive to live here. Extremely low income rate for our area because we're part of the Cambridge Quincy demographic is $31,150, and this is for an individual. Low income rate is 51,950 and moderate income is 82,950, and this is for a single fam, person. Okay? So it gives you a sense that when we start talking about low and moderate income, it really is a lot of people here, a lot of people that we know, it's, you know, everything. So let's go to the next slide. And that's, I'd like to talk about low income because people look and say, "Oh my God, I'm there." You know? And so here we've got the air household income, and this is what showed up in the 2020 census. And what I broke it down on is, one big one is 13.6% of air seniors are in the federal poverty income. Okay? So if you look at the first category, first grouping, we've got, it breaks down to 38.8% of our households are actually in the, below the moderate income. You add in 75 to 99, and that is if you're a single, at 82, you're in moderate income. But if you're a family of two or more, you're in, you're moderate to low income. Like four, if you were a family of four, you would be low income. Okay? So if you add the 10 to the 38, that puts you at about 49.3%. So almost 50% of our community is in low to moderate income. And there's one more thing I want to talk about is we talk about low and moderate income, but there's one more category to think about, and that is called workforce housing and our workforce population. And that is at 110% of the area median income. So if you go to the next slide, I'll show you how that works. So here we've got household size, low income, moderate income. Now, in the Quincy Cambridge district, a single person, area median income is 112,000 and change. I don't know it exactly on my, top of my head. So if you're talking low income, it's 51,950. If you're talking moderate, it's 82,950. But if you were talking workforce housing, it can be up to 110% of the median income. Okay? So, and the reason that's important is because this is, this is middle-class America for Massachusetts. Moderate workforce, all that is really, so we're not talking about that we're building tenements. We're talking about just having a diverse community that can house all different types of people. Okay? And so far, anybody got any questions on this stuff? Okay, so next slide. And we talked about this in a couple in our housing, future of housing in air. Here, I want to talk about the different types of housing units and, boy, I can't see this. Okay. Detached. The detached is the orangey color. Attached, which would be your two families and.
Apartments.
Yeah. Apartments and, yes.
And then more.
But if you notice, air is a very diverse community compared to its neighbors. That's the really key one. And that is why we do have a really diverse population. And if we lose that housing, we lose the diversity because we don't have any place for them to live, for us to live. I should say for us to live because it, we're. Okay, next slide. And.
Alicia.
Yes.
Is one attached a condo?
Um, yes. A condo is.
Considered a one attached.
Well, it could be considered a multifamily too.
Okay.
Okay. Now.
No, wait a minute. Multifamilies.
Is three or more.
Yes, and condos can be three or more.
He was talking about one attached.
The, can you go back to one slide?
Okay.
That, that light yellow.
Okay. I got closer.
The one attached.
That includes condos.
I think that's two families.
It could be.
But they can be condos.
Excuse me. A two-unit, two-unit condo.
Could be a two-year condo.
Depends on ownership.
Yes. That's all ownership.
Yeah, condo is, is.
It's not a ownership style.
We tend, we tend to interchange the word condo with, condominium just mean, it's a type of ownership.
Yeah. It's, what I think you're asking is more, is it a, like, townhouse or is it?
One attached is a two-family.
Okay.
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 Then two-family, which can be either condo or, or.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
And, so when we use the word apartment, that is a rental property?
That's a unit.
Owned property.
Yes, that's a rental unit.
Thank you.
The dwelling unit.
Yeah.
In our, in our wording.
But it's rental, not owned by the occupants.
Correct, yes. So I want you to split this because this is 20 years of building in air. So if you go down to 2010, yeah, right there. Thank you, Danny. So if you look from 2000 to 2010, we were building a lot more diverse housing. And then, and if you look here, we've, we only in 2019 did we really get, and can anybody read the document?
Five or more.
Five or more units. Units, thank you. And those were two, two or three different projects that happened right there. But what we're trying to do, what, what the working group and what has been recommended here is to create more housing types and, and from apartments to multifamilies. And I would like to speak to the concept of, when you talk multifamily, that can be also townhouses that are condos. And we talk about two families being a place for people to be more affordable for people, but many first-time buyers start out in a condo. And, I don't know, I mean, I bet you if we raised, I started out in a condo, you know? That's where a lot of people start out, is in a condo, yes. And so we should encourage the ability to build multifamily townhouses. They can be for, for ownership, but it's that place where the, where the young person and the young family can start out. So, next slide, I don't think I have any. This is just housing units by type and how we compare to the state. And in some places we're below, but in many places we're above the state. In five to nine units, is that what it says? Okay, thank you. And three to four units, we're a little bit low on.
Yep.
But we have two families, we're right just a little bit above single-family homes. One thing I haven't put in this presentation is, as you look at the numbers and you look at the sales that have happened.
Word.
In the next, in the last 10 years, is, the sales really show that we have lots, we've had mostly single-family homes built and in the more recent future, they're selling for a lot of money. And that means we're getting gentrification and as we turn over our small-A housing.
Yeah.
It's going to turn over to more, to more expensive and more gentrified. And I think one of the great things about air, and it's what we've heard when we've done presentations, but also public input sessions, is people don't want air to change. They want, they want to have the community that they have, which is a diverse community. And having a diverse community, you really need diverse housing. So.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Give me one second, Charlie. I'll get to you in a second. So first, I want to ask my board colleagues if they have any specific clarifying questions and then I'll get to you. and then I'll get to you on Charlie and everyone else. So, uh, I don't know who had, I'm going to go with Nathan, I'm not sure who had their hand first. Nathan, then Jeff.
Alicia, uh, you mentioned air has grown more than the neighboring towns. Do you know why, or you indicate, you have major areas of why growth is?
Well, I think Alan and I have talked about it a lot. And I think that what's happening in Devens is not only bringing in jobs, but it's bringing in high-end jobs. So air is going to really feel that gentrification because those high-end jobs, it's wonderful when you have a five-minute commute. And, um, but there's also a lot of young people going into Devens, too. And so being able to bring them into our community would be wonderful. And, um, and they'll, they'll disperse around the whole area. But, but I think that when you see those single-family homes going for wild prices compared to what they were five years ago, that is probably the pressure of Devens.
And Jeff, I'm going to just, if I can throw on that, we moved here because it's on the commuter rail.
Yes, and it's on the commuter rail.
It has transportation.
Can I ask you to go back a couple of slides?
Yes.
And Alicia, you may not be, that one. You may not be able to answer this question right now. But the bottom line is air, the dark left-hand side, that's the detached, single-family homes. How many of those are occupied by people in this town that are low or moderate income?
Oh, over 50%, almost 50%.
So half that line is occupied by people who would not be able to afford them in today's market.
If you remember, I showed that 49%, 49.3.
Yep.
So.
I was just trying to translate that to this picture. So right there, a quarter of our housing stock, people, I hate to use the expression, are house poor. They've been in for a long time, it's an asset to them, but if they wanted to come to town, uh-uh.
And this is why, what the working group was really kind of working towards is, we want to have affordable, little A, affordable housing and diverse housing stock so that people, you know, the elderly that are, want to sell their house and downsize, have that ability to stay within the town as well as new people who want to buy and join the community have that ability.
And this doesn't even include the generations of the people who live here who might want to come back.
Correct.
So, okay, thanks, I just wanted to, I just wanted to take those two charts and lay them over each other because I'm more graphically, I'm more graphical minded, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
And I'd just like to reiterate, reiterate the fact that it's important to understand this is not going to happen overnight. We've had form-based code in now for four or five years, we haven't had one project. We've had the in-law apartments in now for four or five years. We haven't had one come through that's, that's made it to the ZBA yet. And so we put that in-law apartment in in order for the people, the parents to help the kids or the kids to help the parents, but how it got passed, it's too restrictive with the 25%. So the duplexes or two-families condos, whatever you want to call them, is also going to help that, help that, too. But it is not going to happen overnight, it's going to be years in the making.
Thank you, could you bring up the Zoom screen just in case to see if we have any participants who want to speak? No, we don't, okay, good, we don't. Okay, great, any further questions for Alicia? Thank you, Alicia, much appreciated. Alan? I, I thought you had a presentation this evening, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say I've greatly benefited from just listening to the dialogue and process. Really my first opportunity to hear the whole thing. Um, so, uh, you know, I just request you, I would like to submit my comments in a written form so I can really process everything I've heard and sort of weave it into the, the big picture. So acceptable to all, I'd like to submit, uh, written comments to you, which I will submit to Danny and have those two.
Uh, I, I would say that sounds acceptable, but I just want to caution that I think we're going to come to, uh, of, we're going to move to, toward a vote to whether to present this at town warrant or not. So if you're, if you have comments that would potentially influence that outcome, you may want to see it.
I would say it would not.
Okay, great, that's fine.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Catherine?
Can I ask you a procedural question?
Please.
So when this goes to town meeting, um, like the table of uses, is that going to show up in town meeting as a single vote? Where the, every single piecemeal change gets voted at once? Or does everybody vote on, I want to flip SPZ in A1 to P, A2, like one by one? Do you know?
So, uh, we've been talking about that.
Yeah, we've been talking about that. The way it's proposed on the warrant article is, it's one big item.
The whole table of uses.
The whole table of uses. But I know there's been discussions with the moderator on how each of the votes were going to be taken.
And no, I got no early, okay, I got no, I got no early horse in the race right now. Um, we'll take a look at the warrant when the articles come together and decide whether we'll be doing things by consent or not. A consent is bundling things that are alike together in order to handle them quickly. And we'll see what happens as the warrant goes forward.
Okay, great.
There's no great push either way right now, to be honest with you.
Can I say a quick thing?
Of course you can.
I just want to thank both of you for those presentations. I, as the sarcastic one that usually sits here and rolls my eyes, often by the time we get to a public hearing, I've heard some presentations many times. Um, both of those were incredibly informative, interesting as a resident of town and as the planning board member. So thank you for those pieces of information.
Seconded.
I'm stopped, no more presentation.
I cut you, I cut you away. You finally nailed one, Charlie, come on.
You might be back by popular demand and then we can't. So I, I'd like to, you know, so what I'd like to do now is that we've heard the presentations and is to open up for any, a further discussion on, on the four items. And of course, Janet, you're welcome to, to chime in as well.
Yes, I was going to whenever was the opportunity.
Well, and I'm going to give you the opportunity right now, why don't you come on up? Don't forget the usual name, address thing, thanks.
Name, address, Janet Provodakis, one, Blena Court, in air.
Welcome, Janet.
Thank you, and thank you very much for asking me. Um, I wanted to go ahead and commend everybody because, again, um, being part of the Affordable Housing Committee, um, being the, the chairman of there, um, I wanted to go ahead and make sure that all individuals had a chance to look at ways to get more affordability within the town. And that's why we created the working group. And the members of the working group, you guys have done an awesome job of putting all this together to go ahead and try to find ways that we can make it happen. And again, it's the little As, because that's what's made a difference. Like, I always kept pointing out to Alicia's chart that showed on how diverse we were and how we're not moving, you know, moving away from being that diverse of, of housing, or dwelling units, if you want to call it that way. Where we need to go and get back to some of these small As that are in our neighborhoods that you, you don't really realize that they're there because of the way that the housing is, is built, the way that, you know, people just come and go. Um, but it's where, you know, you get those little kids that are running in the neighborhood or you get the parents that can go ahead and watch over the little kids. Um, it's, it's great. And as you get into the single-family where all of a sudden now you have your own little section, air is known for its communities. I mean, that's one good thing about, you know, no matter where you live, everybody's got their own little, you know, um, sections. And this is what the working group is looking at. All right, so with that, I, I really applaud the planning board of taking this on and trying to push it because as Charlie says, it's not going to happen overnight. But we need to go ahead and make some changes so that's inclusionary housing can move forward. And again, we heard it through the working group, we've had it out there for years and it really hasn't been bit, you know, no one's taken, you know, rein of it. And this gives us a chance. So, um, you've got my vote and I'll be there at town meeting and I won't do one of these things, but that's. All right, um, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'd like to say, it was, it was a great group and we're going to be continuing. We got the okay from the select board, so I just thought I'd warn all you all. Okay, so we'll be busy.
Great, yes.
All right, so again, thank you.
Thank you. So I believe we can move into the deliberation towards getting to, and I think we're looking at four votes, right, for the, there are four items, I believe?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, yeah, I guess we'll, let's, the zoning map.
Procedurally, do we want to have the board comment on this stuff?
I think that's what I think.
Yeah, that's it, we're going to do it, let's do them one in turn.
I think he wants to go by each one.
Let's do each in turn. And so the, and I think the first two seem a little bit simpler than the remainder. So I think we can, we may be able to go through those rather quickly. So the first item on the table is, do we have deliberation about the, uh, just getting the zoning map approved, the correct zoning map approved at town meeting? Any questions or anything?
I was going to ask, do we motion second and then discuss?
Let's do that.
Yes.
Go for it, Jeff.
Move to approve, move to take the zoning map to the town meeting for final approval.
Relating to the rezoning of 2020?
Yeah, as described by Danny Reese.
Thank you. Further discussion? I think this seems pretty straightforward, it sounds like we can move to vote. Ken?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Chair votes yes, it's, uh, we will move that to town meeting. The second issue is.
Establishment of the zoning board of appeals.
The zoning board of appeals, just formalizing the five members and two alternates.
Move to approve the establishment of the zoning board of appeals to include the underlying language presented this evening, that the board of appeals consists of five members and two alternate members. We shall be residents of the town of Air, shall be appointed as provided by MGL, chapter 48, subsection 12.
Seconded.
Further discussion?
I have one tiny question. Does there any, so this is being prompted by town council asking the planning board to make this change. It doesn't come through the zoning board of appeals at all.
No, so, uh.
Because we are at control of the changes of the zoning.
Of the bylaw, yes. And since this is within the zoning bylaw, you, the planning board is the one who is in control of that. So this has come up because of the town council's review of the ZBA section. They were also, because they were also looking at the zoning, uh, ZBA's rules and regulations, which also references this section. So that's kind of how it came up.
All right, so there's no question, I mean, we invited the zoning board of appeals if they had a comment and I don't see them present, so.
Yes. Those are mainly thoughts. I've been checking the board repeatedly.
Um, I think this is quite honestly, a, I see it as a housekeeping measure.
Yes.
Because our, chapter 40, chapter 48, section 12 has been rewritten recently because everybody was doing their own gig across Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Good.
And, uh, you know, they're using words like, you, if it's a noxious use, you can't, you can disapprove it. Yeah, so it, this just codifies what's going on with Massachusetts law.
Great.
Hi.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous.
Third is move that we approve to take to the plant, to the town meeting, the vote to approve the addition of the following to subsection 320-10.3, basic requirements. And I'm just going to ask quickly, is that 10.3?
Uh, so you want to propose an amendment of 10.3.3?
Thank you. So it's moving to 10.3.3. To include the language, A, for design guidelines of preferred affordable, affordable multifamily new construction, refer to the Massachusetts Multifamily New Construction Design Requirements and Guidelines developed by BHDC, DND, Mass Housing and MHP. One, the planning board shall have the authority to allow new construction of multifamily housing under subsection 10.3 of the air zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of new units to meet the target unit sizes referenced in section 4.b, design guidelines for unit, units layouts and interior dimensions, or take any other action relative thereto. Sorry, guys, my.
Seconded.
The editor in me wanted to fix that.
Yes, discussion.
I have some. Okay, so the advertisement said A, but it's one, which was in the motion, just the way it was.
A1.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
The advertisement?
Yeah, this had an A there.
Oh, on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Yeah, that just, I actually read the other time.
So the agenda had A, but it's one.
Yeah, yeah, it's supposed to be one. Computers. Yeah.
So I want to make a suggested amendment, if, if true.
Please, go, go.
Um, I just believe it's important that we have the correct date to reference this, um, by this, the multifamily design standards and whatnot, construction and design requirements, simply because of the fact that actually the, the agency changed their name in 2023.
This is one of the old communities.
So we are referring to a document of April 2022, and I believe we should have that in there so that we know we have the right document. In any event, if something happens in the future, if we have to go to town meeting to update the date, then we'll just do it.
I would ask, as, conversationally, um, document of the date and succeeding documents?
Yes, I like that.
I don't, I'm not sure what the town council will say for the language.
I just don't know the answer.
I don't, I think you have to have the specific date, I don't think you can refer to some.
I'm not going to argue against the date, I was just.
Yeah, I don't think we can say succeeding documents because.
The world may change.
I, I would, I would advise against not doing it.
Okay.
I would against doing that, yeah. About adding the and succeeding?
And succeeding.
No, my only concern is if we tie it to a specific date, if they update that, would, do we have to go through this all, all over again?
Yes.
We might.
Is that desirable?
I mean, to change the date, I don't think it's a, I mean.
All that we required to change in the date, we don't have to go through the formal deliberation or doing.
We would still, it would be still a proposed amendment, but we've already basically done the legwork now. So it's kind of just, oh, we're amending the date. It's kind of just more of looking forward as, as, as looking just to change the date. And it's not as big of a process.
Right, because I thought one of the virtues of this was that by referencing the Massachusetts state guidelines, that we'd always be consistent with them, even if they updated or changed, that, that, we'd still be there. But if we date it, then do we lose that virtue, that quality?
No.
We don't.
And the other thing that can happen is they can easily change the title.
Yeah.
That's true, too.
So the title is Massachusetts Multifamily New Construction Design Requirements and Guidelines in quotes.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
It, it's very possible they could change it to something.
And because they changed it from the certain mass housing to something else, they could have. So we may have to change it just because they make a number of different.
Changes.
Descriptive changes.
So, uh, we have on the table a suggested amendment to include the date, is that acceptable to?
Did you make that as a motion?
I'll move that, uh, the planning board amend the previous motion regarding the approval of the design guidelines for the mass multifamily new construction design requirements and guidelines by adding the date, April 2022.
Seconded.
Any further discussion?
Just one thing, so the way it would read now as, as proposed, it would be, um, so, uh, 10.3.3, basic requirements, A, for design guidelines of preferred affordable multifamily new construction, refer to the Massachusetts Multifamily New Construction Design Requirements and Guidelines developed by BHDC, DND, Mass Housing and MHP dated April 20, uh, 2022.
Do you accept as of April 2022?
Well, it's just the date, it's, it doesn't have to be as of, it's just, it's dated.
Okay. Further discussion?
Did we second?
Yes, we did. Was that seconded? I believe it was.
Yeah, question?
Yes, sir.
Um, just to be clear, we are proposing to insert something into the bylaw. This is not removing anything in 10.3.
Correct, yes, nothing is being removed.
Only an addition.
What would happen is it's being inserted as, as A and all the other, other ones just changed to B, see?
Yeah, yeah, just going to be clear that nothing's being removed.
Correct, nothing is being removed.
If we don't get, let's say, let's say the table of use is not approved.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. I know, but. It says the planning board shall have the authority to allow new construction of multifamily housing. So that would still stand? Okay, multifamilies would still be a special permit to the plan, or not a special permit, but an application to the planning board.
Yeah, we currently still have it.
Okay, so this would stand if the table of use stays the way it is?
Correct.
Okay.
We would still have it.
Okay, just for clarification, and I thought you had a good question. This becomes the new A in that section.
Yes.
The previous A, B, C moved down one point.
Correct.
So what was A before becomes B, and this gets inserted as a new A under the, okay, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah, good. Hearing no further discussion, Ken?
Hi.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, it's unanimous.
Move to see if the town will vote to approve the amendments to subsection 5.2, table of use regulations, or take any other action relative thereto.
Seconded.
Question, just, do we need to outline all the different changes there? Is it good enough to say changes as discussed at the public hearing, or how should I phrase that?
I think what we can do is as proposed on the, on the table of use is presented at the planning board hearing. I think we can state it that way, so that we don't have to go through each.
You don't want me to read the whole thing?
So is that understood? Do I have to make an amendment or to it, or is it, we're good?
No, I think we're good, because that's what was presented.
Beautiful. And we have, do I have a second?
You did.
I did have a second?
Yes.
Discussion, now let's, now let's get into it.
I'll go last.
You're going to go last?
Uh huh.
Anchor.
Well, you may be first and last.
I was going to say, I'm happy with the changes as discussed.
And I'll take my earlier out of order comments as sufficient for what my questions were.
Jeff?
I think we've discussed this plenty.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why I have no comments, is that I feel like this has been discussed, that we've presented the fruits of it, and it's been further discussed, so I'm good, too. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Kathleen?
No, I, I think it's great.
Thank you, Danny. Mr. Diskin.
Boy, we hustled as fast as we could there, Mr. Diskin.
Mr. Diskin.
Mr. Diskin.
Ken?
Boss.
Yeah, right. Okay, so the first thing that I see is in the, the language for the amendment itself.
Yes.
In all the other amendments, we referred to section 321 before the subsection 5.2. This one does not wrench in 320 at all.
Yes, and that's because, so under, and those are referenced because of the E code 320. If we want to amend it that way, you can, but it's because it's just its own section under 320. It doesn't have like a dash 10.3, or doesn't fall within like one of the bylaw sections. It's its own attachment. It's like a separate attachment under 320.
I don't know, for clarification, I think it is part of 320.
So it is, it's, but it's, it's a separate attachment.
It's a table.
A table, exactly. So to, the way it's referenced in our E code, the way you would, it, the reason these all have 320 before them is because that's how it's referenced on our E code. This is just a, it's its own separate attachment, and it's referenced as 5.2.
Please see table 5.2, or see table 5.2.
Of what?
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just.
Understandable.
It says, to see if the town will vote to approve the amendment to 5.2, table of use, or take any action.
Section 5.2.
Doesn't say that it's part of the zoning bylaw 5.2.
So it's, it's this actual document.
Zoning bylaw would be appropriate.
The actual document.
That is, because it's referenced at the top of it.
That is the title of the document.
Yeah, that's the title of the document.
Table of use regulations.
Section 5.2.
Section 5.2.
Of what? Table of use of what?
A table of use.
Isn't it the zoning bylaw regulations?
Town zoning bylaw.
The town zoning bylaw.
It's supposed to say town zoning bylaw, I think in the.
I'm just telling you what our, what the actual document is labeled as, and that's how it, that's how I wrote it. So if we want to add to it, we can.
I think you should add the, the language that it's table 5.2 of the air zoning bylaws, so that we know it's a bylaw amendment, not just a table amendment.
Okay, so section 5.2, table of use regulations.
I think the way it should read is to see if the, see if the town will vote to approve the following changes in the air zoning bylaw, table such and such.
Okay.
5.2, table of use regulations. So with, no specifically, it's referring to the air zoning bylaw change.
An acceptable amendment?
Okay, so, so.
To the motion?
So to see if the town will vote to approve the amendments to the air.
Zoning bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Table 5.1, well, whatever you want to call it.
Section 5.2, table of use regulations.
Okay.
Okay, that was the first thing, thank you.
So that's, that's an amendment that needs to be, you know, we have to vote again.
Motion and seconded.
I consider that friendly, but I'll move, I'll accept that and move to accept the friendly change.
Seconded.
Okay.
Ken?
Oh.
We've only, that.
Well, there might be other amendments, so that was the first one, I guess.
Okay.
So I appreciate the fact that Charlie came out to the table and others came out to the table, and I think it's important for everyone to remember what was said about this being a slow process. So this is just my own comment and following up on the fact that other changes that we've made have taken time. One of the things that came up that was a little confusing is, I believe as a board, we're really going to have to emphasize the dimensional requirements that stay in place. An interesting question came up at another meeting regarding, how many lots in town does this affect? And the answer is that it really doesn't affect any lots in town, except those lots that comply with the correct dimensional requirements.
Correct.
So it's not like we're asking people in A1 or A2, telling them right away that they can just drop this on the lot. It's very critical that people understand that there's other dimensional requirements and other building code requirements and whatever might apply to that lot. So I just want people to understand that. I think that's going to be a question, because I think the apprehension is that people are going to think automatically they can put it in A2 if they live in A2, but it's not. It's much more complicated dimensionally than that. So I'm not sure we, you know, got there, you know, I just wanted to say that for emphasis.
No, I agree with you, and to clarify, yes, you would definitely, as part of Charlie's review, they would need to show that they meet all of the dimensional requirements and all, anything else that he, you know, deems that is necessary, as he would for a single family home.
Right. And I had a similar concern to what Kathleen mentioned, and I, I just thought that we would have to attach the table, or make a reference to the table as part of town meeting. So in other words, we would show the, the.
Yep, we're going to show the new table. Yep, the table is part of the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, that was included.
Do we need to show both tables, the existing and the new, so there's no confusion about where we came from and where we're going to?
I can do that as part of my presentation.
That makes sense to people.
That wouldn't, we wouldn't do that as part of the article. I would do that as part of my presentation to, and put it side by side.
As long as people understand that we're going to show them the table and whatnot.
And, yeah, and this is exactly the question you asked.
Yeah, go ahead, Julie.
Sorry, Danny, can I just suggest that you do it like you struck apartments and wrote dwelling units, like how you left the edit on here?
Yeah.
Don't do side by side.
Okay. Yeah, you're right.
Increase the box size or something, so you can put both.
Just strike what it was.
Just keep it as like a tracking changes.
Yeah, that, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, that was good. Got the date. So the only, the final comment I have on this, I guess, is, well, I'll stick with the table in general. I think we need to get an answer from town council, whether we can amend one piece of this table, or we lose the whole table on a vote. So if there's a potential problem with somebody on one line of this table or one change, are we allowed to accept, is town meeting allowed to make an amendment to that piece?
Yes.
And keep the rest the same?
Yes, and the reason, so that's why when I write these, our proposals on the zoning amendments, it says, or take any action relative thereto.
Good.
It allows, it gives some leeway to do what we just did on like amendments on how we're wording it. It allows for amendments within the document to be made if it's, like, if you, if there's a motion on the floor that says, no, put those back to what they were before, special term permit by the ZBA, that can be done, and then the rest of the document can still stay as what it is proposed.
Okay, I just.
Yeah, and that, so there's, that's, that's the main reason when we write zoning amendment articles like this, you add that, that language.
Okay.
Because.
I just want to be careful, that's all.
If you don't add that, you are stuck with what's being proposed. It's either that or none.
Or none. Right, so I'm trying to get away from the all and.
Take any action relative thereto.
Correct, that's what those mean.
Yeah, that's why I add that. But, and we can talk offline about how that can go.
I don't need to talk offline.
You can only revert, you can't.
Go.
You couldn't add something new.
No, 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 right. We can't make it more restrictive or less.
You can, exactly, yep.
Can you, if it comes down to it, can you only change the cells that we are highlighting?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Only what's being changed.
Come in and say, oh, actually.
No, no, only.
If we're doing this, I also want to do this here.
It's only the sections that are currently being changed.
Right, so there's like.
So either.
It's the red.
It's either going to be permitted, or it's going to revert back to the ZBA.
Got it.
Or permitted to ZBA, or permitted to no.
You can't come in and say, actually, we want.
To change this one over here.
Yeah, got it.
I don't think, and the reason behind that is there has to be the hearings and all the appropriate.
Correct, yes.
Things that happened before town meeting.
That is correct.
You can't just pull it off, yeah, at the town meeting.
So that's not part of the relative, okay.
Yeah, the rest of the, that's why, so we did not discuss any of the other topics. There was no public hearing on those. Those were not advertised, so those cannot be changed.
But we did advertise striking apartments and putting in dwelling units.
Yes.
So that is open. Anything that's red is open for discussion at town meeting.
Yeah, but we didn't know, we did not, we didn't put, we, the language of the advertisement did not include these red pieces. It included the heading of the table only.
And this is the reference that it is.
I have no trouble with that at all.
Okay.
The warrant, the warrant used to be goat skin, and they didn't write things on it.
Yeah, the warrant article references this.
References that.
And, and so when I fill these out, there's a warrant submission form that I have to fill out, and these are, everything that I propose goes along with it. There's an exhibit that goes in with it, each of the warrant forms.
Right. So a citizen could walk in and see that in black and white right now?
Correct, yes, yep.
Thank you.
So we are at the submotion on the change of the language.
That's the thing, do we need two votes, one for the submotion of a change of language, or just one vote overall?
It's one vote overall. I mean, because you already seconded and.
I got one more thing.
You got one more thing, and I also want to see if any, if there's any further comment before we vote. Go ahead.
Okay, so I wanted to, you know, verify the fact that, you know, most of these changes have heard a bunch of times came from the working group, but I do have to clarify the fact that it might not be unanimous, and that I had, still do have a concern with the two family in the A1 and A2. And the concern, it's only revolving around the fact that somewhere along the line, I believe we need to put in the language of it having a single family appearance. We still don't have that language anywhere. And can we, is it possible for us to regulate that without having the language someplace, I guess is my concern? And maybe that's not a concern to the rest of the group. So if it isn't, then it isn't.
I, I have no issue with that. If you can amend the motion, I'm good with that, because that is the goal, to make it look like one family. I'm scared from our work.
Yeah, so I'm going to, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, please.
I'm going back to the way I see planning as the lines on paper, not.
Yes.
Not, I don't know how to put it, we, we aren't the arbiters of style. I agree, I agree strongly with what Charlie's saying, but I would actually ask for another town that has taken that up and been successful with it.
I can hate them right now.
And, and I was going to say, through, through town council.
Right.
Because I came from a town where they fought about this.
Yes.
For decades.
Yes.
So in my experience, there are, you're right, there are a lot of other towns that have that. There's, there, in my experience, the way a two family looks versus a single family, not that much difference, it's just two doors or one door, really. That's, that's really what we're talking about here. And in my perspective, I don't see how that's any, how there's no, an adverse impact either way. And I think that's how we need to look at it, because when you look at the special permit criteria as to how that falls under it, what is the adverse impact of having a two family that looks like a single family or a duplex? There really isn't any adverse impact to the neighborhood, to, there's no socioeconomic impacts, utility, like, there really isn't an impact on that. So I don't feel it's something that's necessary. It may be something that down the road, the board may want to work on some design guidelines for, you know, architectural review, if the board may want to do that, because there are towns, like Wellesley has a architectural review board, that if you're submitting for a single family or a duplex, you have to go through it, and they tell you whether or not they like it or not.
Okay.
You know what I mean? Like, I don't want to get, I, I feel like if we go down that road, it, you get very restrictive, and that's where the gentrification really starts coming into it.
Right, I would prefer not to do that, because I think it's contrary to the very first principles that we started the meeting, was the whole point is to get a greater diversity and variety of housing, to get the lower A affordability. So with that in mind, I would like to make it less, I'd prefer to leave it less complicated. Yes, Jeff?
I have one more comment, and I've experienced this because I've actually put multis in a by right area that didn't look anything different than the houses next to it in certain section, in certain neighborhoods of Cambridge. And how I was successful at that is I went to the city of Cambridge and I spoke to the building department, the community development, and I said, it's a two now, we want to do a two again with a different look. And they said, perfect, but you're going to get through easier if you let them know it's going to be a single entrance two, or a entrance on the side two, depending how you do it. I did two of them in the Magazine Beach area of Cambridge. And I would expect anybody coming into this town who would do that would probably ask the question.
Okay, so back to you, Mr. Chair, this, this is why I had, brought up the question.
It locks us in.
Trying to get the feel for the board if they're on board with this, and it looks like they are, so that's good, so we'll move on. So that was the reason I brought it up.
Right, thank you.
I'm not pushing it, so, I'm just saying.
I appreciate, I know.
No, I appreciate it, too. We think we ought to think about it. So I got one, lastly, to help endorse the, and I'll be quite frank, the most important line to me is 1.3, not, not 1.2.
Yeah.
Coming from the affordable housing angle, this is the one that potentially has the best connection to the inclusionary housing, which we just talked about, and the language for that. Because these are the areas that we typically are going to look at getting more multifamily, and it also includes, by changing the inclusionary, making it easier, I don't think we talked about it then, but it encourages now development, I'll go back to the inclusionary just for a second. It encourages development in the downtown air form base code and the West Air Village form base code by us making those inclusionary housing changes. There's been, you know, some pushback in those areas because of the 750, so I'm just going back to that for a second. But the other important factor of the 1.3 for the, the special permit planning board rather than an N in the A1 and A2, has to do with language that we already have in our OSRD development. This is a clarification that in the OSRD, we, the language allows all three housing types, single, two, and multi, but we have to refer to the table as the ruling, you know, requirement, the ruling document. So this clarifies the fact that under the OSRD, which falls mostly in A1 and A2, we stayed in one place in the zoning that we allow all housing types with a special permit, and now we put that special permit where it belongs under A1 and A2.
So we've achieved, we would achieve consistency?
We've got consistency there. And not only that, in the past, I don't know, 20 something years ago, before we made these upgrades in the zoning, this was the way it was.
Correct. Correct.
It was ruled by the, the language of the, they called it cluster development at the time. So we're clarifying the fact that we allow, we say all housing types are allowed, and we're putting it in the table to overcome that discrepancy. That's the way I feel about it, anyway. And I think in the long run, it'll give us more opportunities to control, you know, the multifamily construction and get more options. And I do believe the same thing that Charlie said, that it's not gonna happen overnight, number one, and there's enough land. You know, it's, there's nobody, there's nobody that should be afraid, this is just gonna take over the town, because it's not. The lots are already set in place, mostly, there aren't that many open spaces that are gonna be taken over by this. So I'm very encouraged by the changes that have to do with the townhouse and multifamily dwellings, so thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
And just to touch on that, you know, I agree with Ken, what Ken's saying is, you know, in the West Air and the downtown Park Street area, the form-based code, you're gonna see more large building, like apartment, dwelling-style, multifamily, whereas in allowing this in the A1 and the A2 zone, you're gonna get a different type of development. You're gonna get more developments that are kind of like the OSRD, but you're allowed to do single, duplexes, triplexes, quads. So more of a sprawling development with more multifamily, with, where you can create kind of a community vibe. So it, it, it allows for a different type of multifamily, as opposed to what's down in downtown, the form-based code, which is gonna be more apartment-style.
Okay, great, thank you. And before we move vote, yes, I was just gonna, that's just what I was gonna do, I was gonna open up to further public discussion. Go ahead, Charlie.
So I agree with Ken that, but on 1.3, but I believe 1.2 is just as important, because the 1.3 is more for development. The 1.2, to me, to have that permitted by right, is more for families, which we need to make it affordable for the town, so I just hope that both of them pass.
Yes.
Yes, good. I want, in the room, any further questions back in the room? And I want to check Zoom, are any questions? Sarah?
Take that as a no.
I take that as a no. Sarah, you're muted? Okay. I, I believe that we are ready to, and if I, I hear no further discussion, we're ready to move to vote. This would include the sub, right, to, to, okay, good, correct. Mr. Diskin?
It's been moved, we've got everything.
We got the move?
So the, and I'll read it for everybody. So to see if the town will vote to approve the amendments to the air zoning bylaw, Section 5.2 Table of Use Regulations, or take any other action relative thereto.
Good.
Aye.
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, unanimous. Wow, I...
I attempted to vote.
What, go ahead.
Motion to close the hearing.
Oh, I need a motion to close the hearing.
Move to close a public hearing.
Seconded.
Okay.
Seconded, any, any further discussion? Ken?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
Aye. Chair votes aye. I just want to make this observation, I just, I want to thank a couple observations. First, I want to thank the working group on this, because I didn't realize this, wow, this was not easy. It is not easy.
It's a great argument.
This is a lot of work. And I just want to point out that in January of 2023, when we started that year, I said, "What do we want to work on?" And we had a number of things. We had the master plan, we had some trail ideas, and the other big one was the review of the zoning. So this is the fruition of a long, you know, over a year of work. And I just want to, and I want to thank the working group, really, for all that they've done to get us this far, so.
We want to thank Janet for...
Yes, yes. There's still more to come.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, don't get tired of patting yourself on the back, we got stuff.
We got stuff to do, we got the town, but, but we...
Mr. Chair, that is important.
What's that?
That this is just the first effort, and it was good to hear that Janet has approval to continue the working group, because there is more to come.
Yes.
Or needed.
Yes.
Thank you. Project status updates?
Yes.
So the first one I just want to touch on is, so in Devens, the, so Mara Healy has lifted the two, the 20 million square foot limitation in Devens, so she has proposed changes.
Okay, so...
That is a proposal.
Not even in committee yet.
That's right. The proposal for it, which is, you're right here. So this is going to make a big, this is gonna be big for Devens, it's also gonna have a big effect on us. Yeah, it's, this is really going to, this is where I think the MBTA communities is going to take into effect, this is West, you know, West Main Street with the form-based code, this is where I think we're really gonna start seeing a lot of that development, really target rental inclusionary to really house these people who are going to be moving into Devens to be working. The next project status is, so 33 Third Street will be before the planning board on March 26th.
Oh, good.
For site plan review and a stormwater management permit. They, let me see if there's anything else. Nope, that's all I had for right now.
I'm sorry. There's two questions, they're unrelated to each other, but what, first is, in the zoning board of appeals decision on denying Third Street, the two multi-unit, the two...
Duplex.
How long was that decision good for? Two or three years?
So it's not, so the, the decision?
I didn't want to get there yet.
So I, I don't know, I don't know if this is the place for me to be talking about that, just because I don't write the decisions, I haven't reviewed the decisions, so I don't...
Okay.
But typically, the way a, a special permit denial is, is a two-year wait.
No, just, I was refreshing my memory and reading chapter 40, subsection, section 12, 4812, about zoning boards of appeals and how they be, and it just, it's, it's in general, it says, "Local bylaws allow them to do two or three," and I was just curious if they decided to do two or three years.
I, I actually don't know.
Okay, it's okay if we don't know.
I asked that question. Our bylaws call it for two years, we have it in there for two years.
Yeah.
In our special permit, in our bylaws, so two years rules in there.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't mean to step in any ways.
No, no, no.
And then, then the other question, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be on this like a dog on the bone. I'm glad, oh, Janet's still here. This is not for your committee, okay? MBTA zoning inclusionary or not, townwide or area?
Yeah.
I just want to keep that in the forefront.
Yes.
Because we're gonna get through town meeting in April, and then we got a lot to get done in order to be MBTA compliant. And I, I told Danny I was gonna keep reminding him of it, so.
Okay, good.
And I'll work on it as hard as you want, so.
Good. So any further updates?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, we're gonna be getting a, there's two other site plan reviews that we'll be expecting for 91 Groton Harvard Road. I know I told the board about this one last time, but just as a reminder, and as well as the, there's another project on Zero Scully Road. It's, it's a lot that's, there's a lot of wetlands on it, but they're proposing a, a building with some garage for storage, and, and so that's in the pipeline coming towards us.